I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified District Board of Education to order. This, there is one closed session item on tonight's agenda. Student expulsion in one case, education code section four eight nine one eight sub F. I, are there any speakers? There are no speakers and so we will, I will, we will now move to into closed session and we will return to open session at six thirty. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education back to order. The meeting is being audio and video recorded and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district's website. Board meetings are being held in person in the boardroom at the district office and the public is welcome to attend. Alternatively, the meeting may also be viewed on the district's YouTube channel where it is being live streamed. Please stand for the presentation of the colors by the Del Campo High School Air Force ROTC. Good evening and welcome. I am Michael McKibben, Board President. To my right is Ms. Zima Creason, Board Vice President. To her right is Ms. Pam Costa, Board Clerk. And to her right is Ms. Paul Viasquez, Board Member. To my left is Superintendent Kern and to his left is Board Administrative Assistant Stephanie Cunningham. Board Member Saul Hernandez is absent tonight as he is attending a family funeral out of town. Individuals who are attending the meeting in person and would like to offer a public comment, we ask that you complete a speaker card available at the staff table and you, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time during the agenda. Please note that Board Bylaw nine three two three limits visitor comments to two minutes per speaker and no more than thirty minutes per single topic. Time will be extended for any speaker who uses an interpreter. Please be aware that public comments including your name become part of the public record. We now move to item D, approval of the minutes for October eleventh. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of October eleventh?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Costa, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Creason. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It is, it is approved, four to zero. We are at item E one, recognition of school psychology, of school psychology awareness week. Mr. O'Orpalo.
Good evening, President McKibben, Board Members. Superintendent Kern, Ms. Cunningham. Superintendent is recommending that the Board adopt Resolution A four eighteen, proclaiming the week of November seventh through the eleventh, twenty twenty-two, as school psychologist awareness week. School psychologists provide a variety of services throughout the district that help support mental health, social emotional development, academic achievement and learning environment, environments for all San Juan Unified School District students. It is my pleasure to introduce our school psychologist, Allison Hartcell, and the Assistant Director of Special Education, Jennifer Nelson, here to accept the resolution. And this is an action item.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution A four eighteen, proclaiming the week of September seventh through eleventh as school psychology awareness week?
So moved, second.
Moved by Ms. Creason, seconded by Ms. Viasquez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It is approved, four to zero. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hello. Thank you. I am honored to be here to represent my fellow school psychologists to accept this. We are a unique bunch of people with a wide breadth of knowledge and experience. We help to support students, communities, families, teachers. We support learning, including academic achievement, social emotional behavioral, sometimes even providing social emotional support to our fellow colleagues. I have been privileged to work with the team. I have, not for very long, but I have been very impressed the past year and a quarter to work with San Juan Unified School District, school psychologists.
We now move to item E two, high school student council reports. Tonight, we hear from student representatives from Encina Preparatory High School and Mariloma High School. Welcome, and let's begin with Justin Orozco Ramirez and Alan Bang from Encina.
Good evening, President McKibben, members of the Board and Superintendent Kern and Mrs. Cunningham. I am Mel Song Bang, ASB President from Encina Preparatory High School.
And I'm Justin Orozco Ramirez, ASB Vice President.
Thank you for, thank you for inviting us to share all the latest information about Encina Preparatory High School.
This year, we've had the pleasure of coming back to a regular school year with our normal events and we're excited to return to the norm. This summer, we started our freshman off right with our link crew freshman orientation to get them transitioned into high school.
Within the first week of school, student government put on the Battle of the Classes, which was a week-long series of lunchtime activities where the classes battled each other. Of course, seniors won. We also, we also had a club rush and were able to get students signed up for many clubs, including Creative, Encina Creative Arts Club, Future Teachers Club and a gaming club, to name a few. The following week, we kicked off the year with our back-to-school rally in our first spare week. We also had our senior sunrise and we celebrated with the seniors for their final year of high school.
Our ASB Council was able to attend the district council meeting at the district office to discuss and share ideas with other schools in order to improve our activities program. We also had our first student senate meeting, which are designed to hear the ideas from all students in the school. We present several questions and each class discusses their answers. Each class chooses one representative to come back and share their ideas so we can get feedback from all students. We do this monthly and has helped to get meaningful student feedback.
Two weeks ago, it was a big week for us as we had our homecoming. This is our first year since COVID and we were able to have a rally and a dance. It was a big success. We started with our homecoming rally and we played games and we announced the royalty winners. The royalty winners. Friday evening, we had our Kennyland themed dance where we had the biggest turnout in over a decade. On Saturday, we got to the floats together and we went to the homecoming football game where we had our halftime show with the biggest floats we've had in many years. We finished off with halftime with a performance from our cheerleaders.
Fall sports are coming to an end and for the most part was a huge success. We were able to have all athletes cleared for the first grading period and it led to success on the field. Our cross-country team led by Coach Omar did fantastic. We had multiple athletes shine and as a team have had several impressive showings. On Wednesday, October nineteenth, the team headed to Forest Hill High School for the CVC all championships and won it for the second year in a row. Coach Omar has built a great program and our athletes are excelling.
Girls volleyball, also led by Coach Omar, had a great season. Both JV and varsity teams, the girls have improved so much. They young and hungry and were eager to see what they have in store for us next year. The JV team really impressed us by winning four big games, something that has not happened in several years. As of last night, a sophomore from Encina was named first team all-league for volleyball out of nine schools. She's the youngest ever at Encina in over a decade to be selected for this honor. Coach Crop and the football team started off hot and were very impressive. The great determination of the team showed in multiple games in which we're behind and fought back and made the games interesting and close to the end. Our winter sports are coming together and we look forward to seeing our basketball, wrestling and soccer teams, what can they, what they can accomplish this year.
In academics, our advocacy department has continued to make some major transformations. We have added some avid classes along with our advocacy classes to get the, our students ready. For college, for college. Continuing with our improved mission, our advocacy and avid classes continue to provide academic and social emotional support. We were able to bring back out student-led conferences after two years of COVID restrictions. For these conferences, families are invited to meet with teachers and the students to share their goals for the school year. This happens twice a year and helps to strengthen the school and family connections by letting students share their yearly goals with a trusted adult in the fall, then review how these goals were met in the spring. We had a great turnout and hope for an even bigger turnout this spring. Advocacy and avid classes are looking forward to taking field trips to several universities this year.
In our vapa department, we created a new course this year called the mural design class. The class is researching and designing to paint a mural on campus and eventually we'll paint the mural. The school is able to help with input on voting on what mural would like to have painted. The class will work on it throughout the year. We're looking forward to the first mural on campus. The mural design class is also looking forward to an upcoming field trip to the San Francisco Museum of Art.
Our school this year has also focused much attention on creating and implementing an equity team. And one common interest for the team this year is to create more parent and family engaging, engagement with the school. We are in the early stages of implementation and hope to do some great work throughout the year.
We'd like to thank the Board for this opportunity to report on the latest about Encina Preparatory High School.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yes, are there any questions or comments from the Board Members, Ms. Viasquez?
I want to thank you both for, for the report and there was a lot to highlight there. Appreciate it in particular, the appropriate bragging and praise of your peers on the athletic side. That all sounds fantastic. Also, was just really excited to hear about the expansion of both the advocacy and the avid classes. Really excited to see how that develops in the spring. So thank you for the report out on that as well. And I think with our way, our schedule works out, we'll be seeing you again once more this year and just hope to, at that point, if I can add a request now, maybe get an update on the parent engagement piece that sounded like really great work and look forward to seeing how that develops throughout the year. So in conclusion, also, I did have one question. Are either of you, the club rush sounded very robust. Are either of you a part of a club that you would like to expand and tell us a little bit more about?
Uh, so, uh, do you want information on one of the clubs?
Sure, I just would like to hear more about the club rush experience and any experiences you all have had positive, you know, positive experiences so far.
Club brush is basically a mini event held during lunchtime where we set up several tables across, across our stage quad and we have students line up to sign up for any clubs that are open and held by staff and, and teachers. And they usually give little pamphlets on what the club is about and what they would be, what they would be learning, but at the same time, what, what kind of hands-on experiences they will have and what they would be learning beyond, you know, the subject of, of what the club is really about. Like, for example, Future Teachers Club. It's not hitting just on future teachers, but as well as, you know, what it takes to, to pursue a specific career and how to, and you know, language and speaking other languages, you know, what source or resources can you, can you take on, on learning another language? And that's pretty much it, you know?
Great, well, I was in particularly curious about the Future Teachers Club, so I appreciate the expansion there and also glad to hear that the student-led conferences are back too. I know that's really unique to Encina, so appreciated the update there. Thank you both for joining us.
That's much appreciated.
I was also thrilled to hear that student-led conferences are back. It's such a unique part of Encina and the work that you're doing through advocacy and that's really, I was sorry when COVID caused us not to be able to do it anymore. So I'm glad to hear that's back again and will be anxious to hear the results of the conferences in the springtime, so thanks for sharing that.
Thank you for the report. I want to start with, I really like your Godzilla shirt. I just can't tell with my old lady eyes if that's Mechagodzilla or just regular Godzilla. I love it. I, two of the things that you, were on my notes that I wanted to cover was the Future Teachers Club and the mural design. So I've been really excited about those two things, so thank you for mentioning those. And homecoming, I just got to ask, who'd you play and did you win?
Um, I don't know who we played, I'm so sorry. But we did lose, it's very unfortunate. A lot of our good players were injured, so it's, you know how that turns out.
I do, I'm sorry I brought it up and I hope everyone gets okay, gets better real soon.
But from our experience, from our experience, you know, we saw them play on the field. They were actually playing as hard as they could and we appreciate, and we appreciate the comments and honestly, I think they did a really good job putting in the effort.
Thank you for saying that. Yeah, yeah, it's all about just going out there and doing it, right? You're not going to win everything by going out and they're doing it. That's, that's the effort, right? So thank you, it's always great to see you too.
Thank you very much.
I too wanted to say something about your Future Teachers Club. Is it relatively new or has been going on for a while?
Um, so yeah, I've been in it since probably, well, I mean, I haven't recently been, been involved in it. But I've been in it since middle school, probably since seventh or eighth grade. So it's been going on for a while now when Encina was first a middle and high school. And over time, I've seen it grow and I've seen a lot of new faces and people, you know, recognizing the club as, as it's more involved in other subjects other than being a future teacher. And it gives a lot of useful information and resources and they really, and they go on a lot of trips together to sort of touch on what student, if, in case they were reconsidering being a teacher, what else could they be interested in? And they have a lot of resources on what colleges would be best to pursue those other opportunities or other careers other than teaching.
Okay, yeah, I actually belong to the Future Teachers Club.
Did too.
Did you, when I was that age? And in fact, the first time I ever did student teaching was in the Future Teachers Club. And that's the thing, and it was truly students teaching students at that point. My second question was indeed, I'm really glad that you're having student-led conferences and that's the thing, I know some of us on the Board participated in those when, when parents were not able to come to that sort of thing. And it was very enlightening for, for me and I know for Ms. Costa and others who were, who were there doing that. And finally, when you have your mural done, invite us. We'd like to, like to come out and see it when it's done.
We will definitely invite you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, thank you very much and we'll now turn to Emma Fan Tran from Mariloma.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emma Fan Tran and I am ASB President from Mariloma High School. Today, I'm here to give you a little insight on what is happening in our local community today. So to start off with our clubs, we have actually been able to officially register over eighty clubs on our campus this year and we had this culminate in our one lunchtime club rush earlier this fall in about late September. But to further to elicit more details on one specific club in general, and we'd love to highlight our bioengineering club, which has recently earned a grant through the Lemons and MIT program to spend up to seven thousand five hundred dollars to create an invention that solves a real-world problem and will benefit our community. So the program will host its sixteenth annual Eureka Fest on June fifteenth in the summer of twenty twenty-three and the club will head to MIT to share their invention and compete in the competition. And so we are so excited for them for that opportunity. And then looking for even further into our future, our school is now actually looking to add another IB pathway called the IB Career Related Program. This is a two-year program for juniors and seniors in which they would complete two IB classes as well as one CTE program or career technical, technical education program. And we only currently house medical assisting and cybersecurity. However, we plan to add an aviation pathway to our school in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic year. We realize that many of our students are having to choose between participating in IB or career technical education. Therefore, we hope that by introducing this pathway, students will be able to explore both and bridge the gap between some of the programs we have on our, on our campus. And then another new program that we have that is introduced this year though is Mariloma Connect, which is our peer mentor, peer mentoring program, which was established. And this is of groups made up of a teacher advisor whom there are over thirty of, one junior and senior pair, which are volunteers, and ten to thirteen freshman students. This program serves all of the entire freshman class of twenty twenty-six and is supposed to be another support system to help them navigate our campus with more ease as well as builds a sense of community. Every freshman on campus has participated in this program by attending community building events at lunch or informational meetings and we, our hope is that students continue to use the program as a line of communication and support throughout the entire, throughout the entire year, excuse me. In regards to events, we have recently wrapped our home, wrapped up our homecoming season, which includes a float building night, the game and dance. Throughout the week, students participated in a fun spirit week, which was paired with a new lunchtime activity every day and students waited in anticipation for Thursday, which was our float building night event, which had over three hundred attendees. This is the second time we've had float building on campus the night before the game and we hope to continue this tradition in later years. We see a positive response from students as not only do they work within their grade levels to complete their class floats, but they also help many of their peers in other classes as well. All four floats were completed in time for the game, which was the following day and we had a great turnout with us making over five thousand dollars in ticket sales and over five thousand, five hundred dollars in spiritware sales. The dance, which was scheduled for the very next day, that Saturday, was an even more popular event where we sold seven hundred and thirty tickets for students and their guests. There were lots of positive feedback after the event and students are looking forward to events scheduled later this season. The next major school event that is scheduled is actually the, our annual Dia de los Muertos celebration, which is hosted on November second during school hours. We invite you all to stop by and participate in the scheduled activities, appreciate student creations and watch the many performances by our student groups. Another creative project that students have been participating in recently is the fall play. Our drama club is performing Wind in the Willows on a few separate occasions this year to expose more youth in our district to drama and theater. They will be having a performance on November ninth at Del Paso Manor Elementary and, and the, their annual performances will take place in Mariloma's Black Box from November seventeenth to the nineteenth. Thank you so much for your time today and we hope you are excited as we are for all the things yet to come at Mariloma High School.
Questions or comments from the Board? Ms. Viasquez.
Thank you, Emma, for, for your report and the update from Mariloma. And go Matadors, as a former Matador myself. I got the chance to spend some time on campus earlier today as well, visiting with Principal Purinton. So thank you very much for, for your time and catching up on all things happening at Mariloma. Excited to hear about the active club report. It's a common and welcome theme that we've heard amongst our student body reports and I think it's just a welcome change from the last two years and hopefully a, an opportunity to really re-engage on things that are, could have student-led and student-driven. Really excited about that grant for the bioengineering club that sounded pretty exciting and was also excited to learn more details about the IB pathway, CTE course as well. Hope that that will get towards the goal of really increasing enrollment in the IB programs. So I appreciate the updates on all of those items and I will see you for Dia de los Muertos because it's one of my favorite activities. So thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. I'll be brief, eighty clubs, that is really, really impressive. That number is just a huge number, so that's great. Again, really cool, the MIT competition, really glad to hear about the bridging of the CTE programming with IB because that's ultimate, at the end of the day, that's what we want for all the kids, for you guys to have the foundation to get a good job, not just any job, a good job with family supporting wages and benefits. So having that bridging where you don't have to just choose, which is hard. It's a hard thing to pull off, so I applaud whoever made that happen, but I'm really glad that it's happening. I will not ask about if you won your homecoming game, so I will skip over that. And more and more high school, I learned a lesson. Really, thank you for sharing that you guys are going to perform your play at DPM. That's great. Another, I don't remember, another school told us about some bridging that they're doing for, you know, the younger kids. I don't remember if it was middle school or elementary, but I just love that the older kids are, you know, getting back to your roots with the young ones and, you know, bringing theater to, to their school. That's really awesome in that you're going to them, not expecting them to come to you. That's wonderful, so just thank you for sharing that and for your report.
Thank you, yes, we still have, we have about eighty clubs, but we are still counting. There are, there are many students with many passions on our campus and we are so proud of them and we are happy to house all of them on campus.
That's awesome, that's great that you make room because there is so many different interests, right? So that's wonderful, thank you. Oh, go ahead, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, it's just, we appreciate all the teacher support on that end and staff support as well as it couldn't happen without them and their advice.
Yep, awesome, thank you so much.
I just had a couple of things. Was there a theme to your homecoming and to the floats and so forth?
Yes, actually, this year's theme was a truly villainous homecoming was our slogan. So that meant that every class chose a villain of any, from any film or movie. So I actually can give you all the themes if you would like to hear them. So the seniors were Joker this year. They won the float building contest as a senior, I appreciate that very much. The juniors were Jaws, actually, as a unique choice. And then the sophomores chose the villain from Princess and the Frog, Dr. Facilier, and then Maleficent from Sleeping Beauty.
Okay. And you mentioned that your play Wind in the Willows was the seventeenth to the nineteenth, is that correct?
Yes, that will be held at Mariloma's Black Box Theater on the seventeenth to the nineteenth.
Was there another set of performances that you mentioned just before that that I didn't get down?
Um, November ninth at Del Paso Manor Elementary. That is our one other performance.
Okay, it was something, some other performance, I heard that one, but I didn't. So maybe I didn't hear what I thought I didn't hear. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you telling us about, about your activities and so forth. We'd like to thank you for, for your report and we appreciate you being here tonight. Student voice is very important to the Board. We, you are welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but we realize that you have homework and busy lives. So if you need to attend to those, this is a good time to return to other things that need your attention. Thank you very much for coming. We are now at items E3 through E6. There are no reports from staff, board appointed, district committees, employee organizations, or other district organizations. We now move to E7, the closed session. Ms. Costa.
The board voted 402 to accept a hearing panel's recommendation of one expulsion in case number S7.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at item F. Mr. Comments. Speaker, four speaker cards. Mr. Kern will facilitate that. We would like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. The clock on the screen counts down the time. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So we are not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent will can refer items to staff who can follow up with you. Mr. Kern, will you facilitate? First up, we have Hal Goldfarb, followed by Abigail Palmquist. So, Mr. Goldfarb?
My name is Hal Goldfarb. I live on 2351 Wide Away. And I'm representing Advocates for Arden Arcade today. We're looking for cityhood for the area we call Arden Arcade. This is in reference to the Creekside Catherine Johnson School Project. I first for full disclosure, I'm not a resident of the Creekside neighborhood. I have no personal connections to the neighborhood or residents. I have no children attending any area schools. So I don't have a dog in this fight, but I'm representing people who have voiced opposition to this. We're not opposed to a new middle school if it's really needed. We're opposed to the location. I took a walk over there. And I took a noticed the first thing I noticed is lack of sidewalks, and this is really key. This creates a safety problem. You got you're going to have school buses, you're going to have cars of teachers and staff, parents picking up and dropping off students, and it's going to create, you know, I mean, the students are going to be walking on the same street along with the traffic. I don't know how you were able to pull off an elementary school there for so long, but even middle school students are vulnerable. And that's just my take on this. So anyway, I understand the site was surplus property in the past, and the whole idea is that it was going to be sold off or something. I don't know. That may be the wrong idea. I don't know. Again, we're not opposed to progress. It's just the location. We're here to request an extension to the public public comment period, and I know there's a workshop coming up on November 15th.
Thank you very much. Abigail Palmquist, followed by Michael Seaman.
Good evening, Board. My name is Abby Palmquist, and I'm a law student at the McGeorge School of Law in Sacramento. And I'm actually taking education law as part of my studies this semester, so it's been really fun to learn about the work that a school board does. And as part of that, I'm here speaking to you today about a policy I think would really benefit the students and families you serve. And that is expanding equitable access to dual enrollment offerings for your secondary school students. Dual enrollment is really important because it allows students to learn at a college level, have exposure to an educational pathway they may not otherwise pursue, improve their college and career readiness, and earn transferable college credit that saves money for students and families and makes higher education affordable. And so it's important that everyone be able to benefit from this program. I really admire the district's eight-point commitment to educational justice and especially equitable practices. And in light of that, I think it's critical that the district make a concerted systematic effort to ensure that your dual enrollment class offerings are equitable. This is especially important because recent 2021 data from the California Department of Education shows that minority students are disproportionately underrepresented in the number of San Juan Unified District students who have taken dual enrollment courses. So a few ideas I would encourage the board to consider are collecting data about which students are utilizing the dual enrollment offerings you currently provide, working with the Community College District to increase your dual enrollment class offerings, increasing communication to students and families about the opportunities that dual enrollment can provide, and especially creating a communication plan for ensuring that student groups underrepresented in current dual enrollment classes receive and understand information about this valuable opportunity. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Michael Seaman, followed by Tom Nelson.
Thank you, Michael Seaman, district residence since 1978. My comments mostly pertain to the draft EIR for the proposed new middle school at Creekside and the shift to the adult education students from Creekside to the Encina campus. The draft EIR is very long, chock full of information. It takes a long time to plow through it. I've been finding errors and omissions on many of its pages. Still, it's a complicated project with a great many things to consider. And for the most part, the public has not had adequate time to delve into it. The public comment deadline is currently set at the end of October. It would be helpful to the public if the comment deadline would be extended to the end of November. That said, I discovered some words in the draft document that I believe would place a school district in serious legal jeopardy. Specifically, the draft EIR says construction on the nine portable classrooms at Encina to accommodate the adult learners will begin this month with completion set for this December and occupancy beginning in January 2023. This problem co-ops any alternative other than the proposed project. And further, the relocation of the adult learners is part of the project's scope. I don't see how you can initiate work on the proposed project before the comment period on the draft EIR ends or at any time until the final EIR has been certified by your board. Relocation of the adult learners is part of the project that is undergoing environmental review. Starting work on the project before you've finished evaluating the project is a clear violation of state law. Under CEQA, public agencies are supposed to consider and disclose to the public the environmental implications of their actions as well as to avoid and reduce significant environmental impacts on these actions when it's feasible to do so. It's a disclosure document, not a project justification tool. Please hold off on the Encina portables until a CEQA documentation has been made final. And lastly, I just learned this evening that the Arcade Middle School Project has proposed mitigative negative declaration on your agenda for tonight. I didn't even know that it had been prepared. Thank you.
Tom Nelson.
Good evening, President McKibben, school board members, Superintendent Kern, Ms. Cunningham. My comments will be brief. My request is that the response period for the draft EIR be extended. The draft EIR is over three hundred pages long. It does not address many issues raised by communities and government agencies that have written letters requesting areas of concern be examined. In two weeks, elections will be over. There will be two additional school board members. Those additional school board members will add value and perspectives. Current and new school board members will not be burdened with election campaigning and will have more time to dig deep into this issue. These are good reasons to extend the response period to the draft EIR. Thank you.
That is the end of the public comment period. We now move to the consent calendar, item G. Do any members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve items G1 through G8?
Some of them moved.
Moved by Ms. Creason, seconded by Ms. Costa. Any discussion? It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed is approved four to zero. We now move to the We move to I1. I'm on the right. And and I1 is amending district graduation requirements for class of 2023. Ms. Schnepp.
Good evening, President McKibben, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. Tonight, the superintendent is recommending that the board discuss offering a credit reduction to the San Juan Unified School District's graduation requirements for identified at-risk students in the class of 2023 only. In order to help guide the discussion and inform the board, there are four critical areas for review. The historical context, current senior data, the feedback that we collected, and recommended next steps. A little background is that prior to the class of 2023, San Juan's graduation requirements supported the state minimums. And in 2016, the board adopted to increase rigor to more closely align San Juan's graduation requirements with the A through G courses. And this would start with the class of 2023 this year. However, we were unable to predict the disruption that COVID brought to our students. And in 2020, AB 1350 extended relief to the graduating class of 2020. And then for the classes of 2021 and 2022, we also received support through AB 104, which offer graduation under the state minimum requirements of 130. This year, there is no legislation to mandate relief for our graduating class of 2023. This is just a little background. This is an outline of the state minimum requirements, which includes three years of English, two courses in math, science and physical education, as well as thirty-five credits for social studies, and also one additional art class, CTE, or other elective. For context, this table outlines the graduation requirements prior to the class of 2023, and then the increased requirements, which include now world language, IM2, a third year of science. And these increased graduation requirements have created additional challenges for our current seniors who have experienced a significant amount of disruption due to COVID. While the class of 2023 at large do not have any safety nets, there is legislation which continues to support specific students, as you can see in this table, to meet those 130 credit state minimums. This was in place prior to COVID, and as you can see, it includes things like foster youth, McKinney-Vento, migrant youth, just to name a few. Currently, the data for our seniors as of September shows that 20% of this year's class is credit deficient. And the biggest areas of concern are in math and followed by world language. Please note that we did remove the seventy-two students who are who were already identified under the 130 credits that they qualified for that were noted on that previous slide. As a further breakdown of this year's class, the largest groups of students who are credit deficient include our Hispanic Latino at 33%, as well as our white students who are at 30%. In looking at options on how to best support our class of 2023, we created a graduation committee that consisted of administrators, counselors, special education representatives, teacher leads. And we reviewed data. We met with impacted students. We gathered feedback from the community. And the goal was to create a recommendation to best support our current seniors. A survey was developed and was distributed to students, teachers, counselors, and administrators and community members. And in addition, counselors reviewed transcript data to really look at the deep impacts that students were facing. And we also met with the superintendent's parent advisory council to share the survey results and then get additional input from them on what we should do next with communication. This is a survey results which included a variety of options to support the class of 2023. And as you can see from this chart, option three had the highest number of both both first and second choices, which would reduce the graduation requirements to the state minimum of 130, but also include a fourth year of English. By far, the least popular option was option five, which was to offer no relief to our to our seniors. For Slide 11, you can see that we highlighted a few of the comments some of our community members, parents, or students made. And a few of the highlights were things like this is the best option for the most students. Another another statement was the class of 2023 suffered as much as the class of 2022, so this should be fair. So based on all the feedback that we collected, the graduation committee reviewed the data, the feedback, current transcripts for our students, and we are recommending that option three is the best option currently as it provides equity compared to the two previous classes, and it also positively positively impacts the most students. The additional ten credits in English proposed will also serve to scaffold the rigor from the minimum of 130. So for next step, the goal is to support as many seniors as possible who have been impacted. If approved, the next steps will be to communicate with staff, our current seniors who are at risk, parents, guardians, also of those impacted students, and then immediately start reviewing our juniors, our class of 2024, to monitor and review how we can best support them moving forward. So with me tonight, I have Tracy Locke, our lead counselor, and Nicole Kukral, our Director of Professional Learning, to help answer any questions that you might have.
Questions or comments from the from the board members? Ms. Viaskas.
Thank you very much to staff for for bringing this forward. I will say I took a very informal poll of regional colleagues, and we're definitely leading this conversation. I don't think other folks have quite gotten to this point. Broadly speaking, I mean, this is a discussion item. I do agree that our seniors this year should be given some sort of relief, given all of the other challenges. I do want to express that I would hope that this is the last year where we have to do this. And I think, given all of the Elo investments, student supports, et cetera, that that's what I hope is a tangible goal, but I don't think this is something that we should continue to consider in perpetuity. And that being said, had I just seen the options that were laid out for the survey, I probably would have leaned towards option one. But I, of course, respect all the feedback that's here and want to take that definitely into consideration. But I'm just wondering if anyone can expand a little bit more on kind of some of the discussions or if there were any key themes that came up when considering the key, the different options amongst the different stakeholders that were included.
I think we went through a lot of discussion around the different options, and I think one of the things that it came down to was the current seniors are struggling as much as the seniors that went through last year and the class of 2021. Well, and so in looking at the totality of the issues that they are facing right now, our goal is to address the most students possible, and the option three was able to support more of our students to graduate.
Let me add a little bit to that, too. And I think when you look at that option and you look at Slide 7, you're not seeing that the English piece was what was holding folks back. And I think really from both staff and students and others, they said there's kind of a that's really important for them as they head even off into the next level of education. Their their senior class affects ultimately what they take in their freshman year of of university or junior college. It also is a little bit of a hook in terms of if we didn't have that there, there could be a lot of kids that would be done early and just say, we're out. Where now it allows us to keep them in the system and really provide us to support them through the remainder of the school year. Because now, all of a sudden, they've got to keep that that extra fourth year. So I think that was a lot of the conversation that went on. I think we explained that real well to to the SPAC parent group as well, and and that made sense. So I think that right there, when you dig a little deeper, really explains the value of that option and the benefits to both our students. and the benefits to both our students and others as we look ahead. Really a benefit even beyond just this year for these students.
That context is super helpful. Thank you both to, to adding to it. And then another question I had is, or it might be a statement, it might be a question. I'll see where I end. Wouldn't, I mean, these were adopted a long time ago, so I completely understand that. But it also came with a fair amount of, of communication of sort of what did match up to, in particular, CSU and UC and other higher education requirements. And so my ask would be, to the extent that the team can entertain one, that it be communicated very clearly to the graduating class. And ideally with each, each one of them, you know, sort of utilizing this option that it no longer sort of matches up, because I think there's an expectation amongst parents and families that the actions that we are taking match up with the requirements that they expect, you know, for higher education learning. And I just don't want to catch anyone off guard.
You know, Ms. Viasquez, I think one of the things when I think back to us making this change and moving our graduation requirements in, in alignment with the UC and the CSUS was even some stories that you personally told about coming into a system and having a mother that may not have understood. And we were really trying to change the system so that everybody had the same opportunity. And, and that was, I think, really the onus for us moving in that direction. You know, historically, there have been times where people say, we want to raise graduation rates. We actually had an experience in this district a long time ago. So they said, hey, let's lower the graduation requirements. We've taken the opposite approach and said, let's make sure we're preparing students for that next level. So I think it's important after hearing what you're saying to make sure that we're, we really are communicating with our students, that those of you that if you were thinking this route and the 130. Now, my guess is a lot of these students that are struggling wouldn't be, but it's still, your point is well made that we need to at least make sure we're communicating that adequately. So thanks for that comment.
And I just want to make sure, like I said, we don't catch anybody by, by surprise, regardless of what their plans are. And that's not to say, again, what I'm not communicating is like, that's all that matters is CSU or UC or any of that. I just want to make sure no one's caught by surprise because of all the work that we've done in the previous years that the superintendent was just talking about. So thank you very much.
Other comments?
Ms. Viasquez really hit on, thank you for the report. I mean, it's such a sad report, but thank you for, I mean, we got to keep it real. And it's just a sad reality. And I know we're going to have CASP next with some more doom and gloom. So it's all kind of pleading together, but I'm glad that we're at least having the conversation together and just being realistic. So Ms. Viasquez hit on something I wanted to make really clear, because this was before my time on the board, the decision to implement A through G. And I just want to make it really clear for folks that may be listening that aren't as familiar, that really was, as was just stated, stated to align with transfer to CSU and UC, because you can graduate from a school in California and not be able to, and you got, get a great job, you have great transcripts, but it's still not enough for your transfer. So that's why that decision was made again before my time, but think that it was an important decision. Also want to make it really clear to folks that may be listening, we're not proposing. The proposal on the table isn't to go lower than what the state requires. Why the state doesn't require, I don't know, does something. So this is not an issue that pops up for students, for any student in California. I don't know, but I'm proud of what was done, what we did to try to get there. It's sad, but I think that this is the right choice. The kids do need relief. I echo Ms. Viasquez's concern and thought about being really clear. And I was thinking, when I was reading over the board packet, I was just thinking as a parent that is in queue a lot, you know? Like, how could it be really clear in queue? Like, okay, this is where you're at in transfer land. This is where you're at in graduation land. Something that's just really easily visible, because you get lost in the numbers and it's just really, it could be hard to look at, you know? So I, I, I don't presume to know the answer, but making it really easy for parents and students to track. And I don't think that we can make the assumption that kids that are struggling don't aspire for post-secondary. We don't know. And we want to make sure that they have the option. So again, I think the communication is key and an ongoing, not just once or twice, but an ongoing something that you can look at and just kind of track. I think it's going to be really, really helpful.
Ms. Creason, can I, even through our conversations with SPAC, but also through our conversations with my superintendent's students advisory council, it's come up about our use of, of Naviance and how we communicate. And I think even in, in speaking with Mrs. Bassinelli, she has some thoughts in place about how we can systematize that better, exactly what you're saying. Because we make some assumptions that some of those things are happening, and then we have kids going, I'm sorry, I, you know, I'm not having the same experience as that student. We're even looking at possibly doing an audit of, of some of our communications through counseling about, you know, who we were connecting with and when. Because we need to make sure that when we have those tools and we're using them, we have markers where we're making sure students are aware. If it's eighth grade, and then again, 10th grade, all of those things need to be in place. And so I think that's going to be a real opportunity that Mrs. Bassinelli is going to be able to even build on through some of the conversations that we've had just over the course of the beginning of this year, and looking even at what students have, have dealt with coming through the pandemic. There's just a, you know, we always think we communicate enough, but I think one of the things we realize is that you can never communicate enough. So it's, it's one of the things that's actually been really beneficial. The student voice on that piece has been so powerful, too. So appreciate you kind of highlighting that as well.
No, and thank you for that. And as you're talking, I have one other idea that came up is the kids that will be graduating at the lower credit number. Providing that, making, we probably already do this, but making sure that they know how to get to UC transfer level. Like, how do you go into community college and, you know, get where you need to be to get to UC, CSU? I think that's really important, too. And I mean, maybe it's more than what we already do. Maybe it's an extra something. And again, I don't presume to know exactly what that looks like, but a little extra support. So, okay, maybe they didn't work as they're exiting our doors, but they know where to go next, so they can get there soon. I think that's, let me make sure that's really all I'd say. I did have a note of appreciation. So I was in a SPAC meeting where this was brought to SPAC. And I have, I had a couple of buddies that were in that room. And they really appreciated how, pretty much that whole meeting is always run or was ran, but they really appreciated this being brought to the table. Because it's, it's really impactful when you bring hard things to community and have this group discussion. And so I just wanted to say, I appreciate, you know, that happening, and we had the conversation with the parents. Thank you.
Ms. Costa.
Thank you for getting back to me with all of my questions. I really appreciated that. And I was on the board for this decision, and I wholeheartedly agree with the recommendation. I believe that these students were very impacted by COVID. I'm still worried about the next year's class. So although everybody's saying just for this year, I'm not certain that the kids that are coming up are going to not be impacted as well. I think all kids were impacted during this period of time. So, um, one of my questions to you was, how many of the graduating seniors will this help in your crystal ball answer? And I think that's important for the public to hear.
We, we talked through a little bit of duplicated 1,266 students are credit deficient. And when we look at the 130 credit state minimum plus the additional year of English, I think the numbers dropped to 800, Tracy. So, so quite a bit of relief can come from this.
And I was one of the people that asked why four years of English. And it really did help me to understand that that's used to place students into courses in higher institutions of learning. So that makes sense to me. Again, I'll go back to the class of 2024 and ask that as you complete your audit, looking ahead, if you will send us a BC so we know what we're looking at in terms of that class, I would appreciate it.
Ms. Costa, it might even be beneficial than rather than just sharing that information in the BC with the board, but doing a staff report at some point when we, when we get that information so that we can give a preview to the public as well as to what we find out, you know, likely that's springtime or when it would be. But we could, we could communicate it in that form.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And thank you for the report. It was excellent.
Were there any other questions before I just to have on, on the option three? Are the, are those that are mentioned in slide six, the McKinney-Vento and the others, are they at the 140 level or the 130 level?
They're at 130. And that was enacted prior to COVID. That has been an ongoing state minimum to support our at-risk students.
So they would still be at the 130, 30 level. I didn't ask that question. But, okay, that makes sense, because it seemed like we had, we were might be violating law if we didn't do it that way. So that's, that's my clarification. So basically, the option that we are approving now is basically what we see in I Two. Is that correct?
That is not correct.
That is not correct.
No, I Two is completely separate, and that has to do with only Caserole.
Oh, it's only Caserole.
That's about the, a different senior project. So this is only, this is
Only the 130, 140.
Will affect, yeah.
Yeah, this is for one year. Yes.
Okay. All right. So they are truly separate. Okay. Thank you very much for this. That we, this does not need to come back for, it does, it does need to come back for action. And it comes back
Yep, at the next meeting.
At the next meeting. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And we're at I Two.
Good evening again. The superintendent is recommending that the board discuss the proposed changes to Board Policy 6146.1 for graduation requirements to reflect the most current California School Board Association guidelines. In 2016, San Juan increased graduation requirements, beginning with the class of 2023. And under the new graduation requirements, students must complete a third year of math, a third year of science, two years of world language, one year of visual and performing arts or a CTE. And these proposed revisions include reflect this newest CSBA guidelines, support current 2022, 2023 graduation requirements, and also eliminates the additional graduation requirements for Caserole High School. So Dr. McKibben, I just want to also clarify, this language, we have now updated for the class of 2023. So up until this year, it would say, beginning with the class of 2023. But it also had the prior graduation requirement. So we cleaned up the CSBA guidelines, we cleaned up the language to reflect the new graduation requirements. And then also that third bullet of eliminating the additional graduation requirements for Caserole High School to reflect just this district's graduation requirements. So this would be an action item that I would bring back next week as well.
Questions from the board? So I think that we've talked a, a number of the things in terms of, of counseling and things like that were the things that I was going to talk about here. And, and I think one of the things that, uh, I, thinking back, I Two was on, on the board when, when this came, that one of the things that we noticed was, one of the reasons why we were going to the increased requirements was that we had a number of people that were doing remedial kinds of things in math. And that's the thing in order to qualify for CSU and UC requirements. So, so that was one of the things that caused us to do these kinds of requirements when, when we started doing this in 2016. So if there are no questions or comments, we will come back in, in, on the 15th, was it 15th of November? Okay. And we move on to item I Three.
Good evening, President McKibben, board members, Superintendent Ms. Cunningham. The superintendent is recommending that the board receive a report regarding our 2021, 2022 end-of-year data results, which include the results of our 2022 California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, also known as CASP tests, as well as other summative metrics related to English Language Arts, Mathematics, English Language Proficiency, Suspension, and Chronic Absenteeism. In addition to reviewing the data with you tonight, we will also be reflecting on the time period and context for which these assessments were implemented and highlighting key actions underway in response to the data. Presenting this information to you tonight is Dr. Gianfranco Tornatore, Director of Continuous Improvement in Outcap, and Chris Smith, Assistant Director for Assessment, Evaluation, and Planning.
Good evening, President McKibben, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. This evening, we are here to present an end-of-year data summary from the 2021, 22 school year. There are three key points we would like for you to take away from the presentation this evening. One, the COVID-19 had a huge impact on teaching, learning, and testing. Two, the results of our data are not surprising. They confirm what we expected, and they are consistent with state and county results. And three, we have plans and actions in place to address both the short-term and long-term impacts of the pandemic. So why do these points matter? Understanding what happened last year will help us make sense of this year's results so that we can implement the right actions moving forward. The big picture is that in spite of the pandemic, our work around equity has not stopped. We have been and will continue to be focused on removing barriers and creating pathways so that all students can succeed, regardless of who they are, where they're from, or what their background and circumstances might be. Our goal this evening, therefore, will be to connect these three key points with an equity lens. In our presentation, we will begin by situating the results of our data in the context of the events and challenges we experienced last year. We will then share the results of our data at both the district level and across student groups. And finally, we will describe the actions we are implementing as a district in response to these results. So in addition to the COVID-19 pandemic, we faced many obstacles and barriers last year that impacted our system. In the next few slides, we are going to share data and information regarding some of these key events to provide additional context to the student results that we will be sharing in the second half of our presentation. So this is a timeline, is it's a snapshot of a few key events during the CASP testing administration window, between March 28th, when testing started, and May 27th, when testing ended. These events also reflect many of the challenges we face throughout the year. In this short time, we experienced an Omicron subvariant surge, an increase in enrollment, and state student information system outages, all of which had an impact on attendance, teaching, learning, and testing. And looking at our COVID-19 case rates during the 21, 22 school year and CASP testing window, COVID case rates fluctuated. During the 21, 22 school year, we saw rapid climbs and dips in COVID case rates, spanning from as low as four cases per 100,000 people to as high as 252 cases per 100,000 people. And during the CASP testing window, we saw a steady and rapid climb from four cases to 38.2 cases per 100,000 people. When looking at attendance, we see that nearly 50% of student and staff absences last year were a result of illness. In comparison to 1819, staff absences due to illness increased by almost 50% in 2122. And during the CASP testing window, staff absences due to illness increased by 140%. For students, absences due to illness increased by 90% in 2122 compared to 1819. And during the CASP testing window, we saw an increase of 183%. When we consider the number of students and staff that were absent because of illness last year in comparison to 1819, we begin to see and appreciate the impact that the COVID-19 pandemic had on teaching, learning, and testing. So during the testing window in April and May, we also frequently experienced system downtimes with a state-run student information system known as CALPads and the testing information system known as TOMS. These scheduled and unscheduled outages during the testing window were a result of processing and communication issues between these two systems. These issues impacted districts across California and were highlighted in a Cal Matters article on September 13th as well. These outages affected student identification for test exemptions, student access to test accommodations, student participation and administration of the CASP and initial ALPAC, testing schedules, administration, and results of assessments, and accuracy of student information records. Last year, a new federal law went into place that requires a 95% participation rate be factored into state accountability systems, which is calculated at the district, school, which is calculated at the district, school, and student group level. This means that if a district, school, or student group does not meet the ninety-five percent participation rate goal, a penalty will be applied to the academic indicator on the California School Dashboard. In comparison to the previous penalty that was in place, this new penalty is more severe and may result in districts and schools receiving a much lower status level than in prior years in ELA and math. So the following three slides provide information on San Juan's participation rates at the district, school type, and student group level. So when looking at our participation rate at the district level, we see that San Juan met the ninety-five percent requirement for both ELA and math. This means that a penalty will not be applied to the ELA and math indicators on the California School Dashboard when, um, reviewing results at the district level. When looking at CASP participation by school type, we see that forty-eight out of sixty-six schools for ELA and fifty-nine out of sixty-six schools for math are meeting the ninety-five percent participation rate goal. This means that eighteen schools for ELA and seven schools for math will have a penalty applied to their California School Dashboard academic indicators. You will also notice that fewer schools met the ninety-five percent participation rate goal for ELA compared to math. We believe this was one of the impacts of the outages we experienced during the testing window with the Calpads and TOMS state student information systems, which I will be explaining in more detail on the next slide. For more information regarding the schools that will be affected by this penalty, individual school participation rates have been included as part of the board packet in Attachment B. So finally, when looking at CASP participation rates by student group, we see that there are student groups that met and did not meet the ninety-five percent participation rate requirement. This means that a penalty will be applied to the ELA and math student group academic indicators on the California School Dashboard for both the district and the school sites that did not meet the participation rate requirement. I would also like to draw your attention to our EL student group. You will notice that most student groups had similar participation rates in both ELA and math. However, for our English learners, there was a ten point seven percent difference in participation between ELA and math. State law allows for newcomer English learners to be exempt from participating in the CASP ELA without penalty. However, for this exemption to be applied, students need to have English learner status reflected in both the Calpads and TOMS state student information systems. Because of the outages with Calpads and TOMS, however, many of our EL newcomer students did not receive exempt status. Additionally, this was compounded by the increase in refugee and newcomer students enrolling in San Juan during the testing window. For example, at one point, San Juan had over one hundred and thirteen newcomer and refugee students whose records were not updated in Calpads and TOMS because of the statewide outages. So the California School Dashboard reports how districts and schools are performing on multiple state and local measures that make up California's accountability system. In prior years, the dashboard reported performance levels using colors: blue, green, yellow, orange, and red. Blue represents the highest performance level while red represents the lowest performance level. These performance levels were determined using two years of data and reported the difference between current year performance and prior year performance to show growth or decline over time. Due to requirements under Assembly Bill one thirty, however, the California Department of Education can only display current year data, known as status, on the two thousand twenty-two dashboard. Therefore, compared to prior dashboards, performance levels are not reported using colors. Instead, the two thousand twenty-two dashboard reports performance levels using current year data only to show status using one of five levels ranging from very high to very low. So so far, I've provided some context on how teaching, learning, and testing were impacted by the pandemic. This included impacts such as COVID nineteen case rates, staff and student, staff and student absences, statewide system outages, and, and statewide changes to CASP participation rates, penalties, and the dashboard. Now I'm going to turn it over to Chris Smith, our Assistant Director of Assessment, Evaluation, and Planning, who will be sharing the results of our data.
Good evening, President McKibben, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. In this data, you will see comparisons to the two thousand eighteen, nineteen CASP data. This is because two thousand eighteen, nineteen was the last time the CASP was administered to students in grades three through eight and eleven. The CASP performance levels have remained unchanged since two, since eighteen nineteen, which are standard not met, standard nearly met, standard met, and standard exceeded. In addition to ELA and math CASP data, this presentation will also include text level, eye-ready, chronic absenteeism, and suspension data to share progress in the areas of academic achievement and school climate. Before continuing, however, I wanted to provide an update to the board regarding yesterday's release of statewide assessment data to pu, to the public by the California Department of Education. One, the CDE is recommending that, that twenty-one, twenty-two data be considered baseline data for measuring student progress going forward due to the challenges presented by the pandemic, which set back progress nationally and in California. Two, in California, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding standards declined by four percent for English Language Arts and seven percent for mathematics. Three, San Juan's results are consistent with California's results. Beginning with English Language Arts, this data shows the percentage of students meeting or exceeding standard. Results show that forty-two point six percent of our students are meeting or exceeding standard in ELA for CASP. When comparing twenty-one, twenty-two scores to eighteen nineteen scores, we see this, that students in grades six through eight and eleven maintained their performance levels, while performance levels for students in grades three through eight, three through five decreased. One possible contributing factor for this decrease in grade three, five, three through five is that all of these students were taking the CASP for the first time due to the suspension of CASP during the pandemic. Whereas our middle school students and high school students participated and experienced the CASP at younger grades prior to the pandemic. Looking at ELA proficiency for grades K through two, you will notice that data is not reported for the eighteen nineteen year. This is because how we are measuring ELA proficiency in K, K through two has expanded and changed. In eighteen nineteen, proficiency was only assessed using text level information that comes from running records such as found us in Benau and Scholastic or Scholastic. Now schools have more choice and autonomy by being able to use text level or eye-ready reading assessment. The reason for this change is that we believe that practitioners have the skills and knowledge to select and utilize assessments that are most helpful in informing the instruction and supporting student learning. Finally, the forty-two point six percent at or exceeding great, grade standards in grades K through two shown here includes both text level and eye-ready. As we move forward into this school year, we will have comparison data that includes both of these assessments. Shifting to mathematics, twenty-one percent of our K through two students were at or above grade level on the eye-ready math diagnostic. The eye-ready assessment was not administered across the district in eighteen nineteen, so a comparative score is not available. However, if we look at the, the percentage of students who are at or above grade level in grades three through eight and eleven, who took the twenty-one, twenty-two CASP as a comparison, we see that K through two student performance levels are at, are lower. Another notable finding was that while performance levels in math for students in eleventh grade decreased by four point seven percent, performance levels in ELA slightly increased. To provide some additional context, each year, there is a national assessment given that takes a sampling of students across the country to see how the nation is performing. Average math scores on the National Assessment of, of Educational Progress, the NAEP, fell by seven points. This drop in math scores was the first decline since the test began to be administered in the nineteen seventies. As mentioned on the previous slide, one possible contributing factor for the, this decrease in grades three through five is that all of these students were taking the CASP for the first time due to the suspension of CASP during the pandemic. Another possible contributing factor to this decline, both locally and nationally, is the fact that math concepts and standards from one grade level to the next can be drastically different, whereas English Language Art standards and concepts build from one grade level to the next. Finally, an additional potential factor was highlighted in Edsors article yesterday, which said that research shows that math is more sensitive to schooling and requires more teacher instruction as compared to reading where parents in the community are more comfortable helping students. ALPAC, ALPAC is the state assessment for English Language Proficiency that is given annually to all English learners. When looking at our overall performance data on the far left, results show an increase in student scoring at level one. One possible contributing factor for this is the shift in EL demographics from eighteen nineteen to twenty-one, twenty-two. During this time, there's been an increase of more than one thousand EL students, with the majority being newcomer and refugee students who have minimal to little exposure to the English language prior to arrival in the United States. Conversely, results also show an increase in student scoring at level four, most notably to, for EL students who have been in the U.S. for more than five years. We believe that one of the factors contributing, contributing to this improvement over time are the differentiated programs and services we have that target the academic and language needs of students with various EL profiles, which we will share at the end of this presentation. When we look at chronic absenteeism, you will notice that this data represents TK through eighth-grade students and not TK through twelfth-grade students. This is because the California Dashboard Chronic Absenteeism Indicator is for TK to eighth-grade students only. A student is considered a chronic absentee if the student is absent at least ten percent of instructional days. This includes excused absences, unexcused absences, or out-of-school suspensions. It is important to consider when reviewing this data that the definition of chronic absenteeism, which is determined at the state level, did not change during the pandemic. This is one of the factors contributing to the sharp increase in chronic absenteeism between eighteen nineteen and twenty-one, twenty-two. For example, absences related to COVID are included in twenty-one, twenty-two data seen here. In other words, the twenty-one, twenty-two chronic absenteeism rate includes students who were absent because they tested positive for COVID and were in quarantine, as well as students who tested negative for COVID but were required to isolate because they exhibited COVID-related symptoms. The following suspension data represents the, represents the percentage of students who were suspended during the school year. It is important to note that a student was only counted once, regardless if the student was suspended multiple times. The results show that between eighteen nineteen and twenty-one, twenty-two, home suspensions decreased by point four percent, while in-school suspensions increased one point two percent. When looking across grades bands, we see that homeschool, homeschool suspension rates decreased in grades TK through eight and in-school suspension rates increased in grades six through twelve. The largest increase for in-school suspensions was in grades six through eight. One possible contributing factor for this is that schools are working to reduce home suspensions by focusing on alternative practices to suspension that include restorative practices, de-escalation strategies, and social emotional learning. For example, rather than missing a full day of learning that with home suspension, a student may be temporarily removed from class to receive behavioral support so that they can safely and productively go back to the class and learn. Next, we are going to share our district data disaggregated by student group for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So we can see and learn where disparities exist and where to target our actions moving forward. To begin, to begin, here's a look at how our student population twenty-one, twenty-two compares to eighteen nineteen. The student population has increased for African-American, Asian, Hispanic Latinx, two or more races, English learners, and students with disabilities, decreased for white and low SES students, and maintained for Afri, for American Indian, Filipino, Pacific Islander, foster youth, and homeless students. In the following slides, you will notice that data for all student groups listed here are not included. This is because we will be focusing on student groups where at the state and district level, we have historically seen lower achievement and greater disparity in performance. Additionally, we have included groups with the largest student populations as a comparison. Here, we have the K through two ELA proficiency and the CASP ELA disaggregated by student groups. To orient, orient you to these data charts and the charts on the following slides, I wanted to call your attention to the green dashed line at the top right of each slide, which represents San Juan's overall district average. When looking at both charts, the largest disparity in proficiency is with our English learners whose ELA proficiency is twenty-one point eight percent below the district average at K through two and thirty-four point eight percent below at grades three through eight and eleven. To provide some context, as discussed on the previous ALPAC slide, we've had an increase of more than one thousand EL students with a majority being newcomer and refugee students who have minimal to little exposure to the English language prior to arrival in the United States. Another notable data point from the K through two chart is the foster youth percentage being above the district average. While this is certainly good news, it is important to note that that number of students is, in this group is small. This means that a change in performance for one student in the foster youth group will have a greater impact on the data compared to the other student groups listed. On this slide, we see K through two eye-ready math diagnostic results on top and the CASP math results shown on the bottom for twenty-one, twenty-two. Both haven't, have been disaggregated by student groups. The disparity shown in each chart is almost identical, except for foster youth students whose performance level in K through two was slightly above the district average, while being eighteen percent below the CASP district average. With the exception of white students and foster youth students in grades K through two, all student groups perform below the district average. However, it is worth noting that when comparing eighteen nineteen to twenty-one, twenty-two data, the disparity rate reduced for English learners, students with disabilities, and homeless students. Another consideration regarding our English learners is that we changed our reclassification process in twenty-one, twenty-two by increasing the number of opportunities for English learner students to be reclassified throughout the year. While this is certainly a positive change for our EL students, this resulted in more of our higher-performing English learners being reclassified last year and thus not being included in the English learner numbers for CASP. This data shows the chronic absenteeism data disaggregated by student group. As a reminder, this data represents TK through eighth-grade students and not TK through twelfth-grade students. This is because the California Dashboard Chronic Absenteeism Indicator is for TK through eighth-grade students only. Also, as mentioned earlier, the definition of chronic absenteeism, which is determined at the state level, did not change during the pandemic. With that backdrop as context, we see that we have student groups that are chronically absent at a much higher rate than the district average. When comparing rates from two thousand sixteen, seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, the overall number of chronically absent students increased across all groups. However, the student groups that are disproportionately chronically absent have remained constant. An additional contextual point for interpreting the data is that the requirements for disenrolling students who have not attended school can vary between student groups, which can result in additional absences being marked for some student groups in comparison to others. Finally, our foster youth students were chronically absent at a relatively the same rate as district average. This is an improvement compared to eighteen nineteen, where the foster youth chronic absenteeism rate was more than double the district average. Here, we have home suspension rate for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year disaggregated by student groups. All student groups had a rate above the district average, except for English learners, white, Hispanic Latinx students. white Hispanic Latinx students who had a rate just slightly above the district average. Student groups with the highest disparity in home suspensions rates were foster youth, African American, and homeless students. When comparing the suspension rates of these groups from eighteen nineteen to twenty one twenty two, we see that these groups continue to be disproportionately suspended compared to other student groups. However, it is worth noting that the suspension rates for these groups have decreased since eighteen nineteen by approximately two percent for foster youth students, four point three percent for African American students, and two point seven percent for students experiencing homelessness. Similarly, with regard to in-school suspension, English learner and white students had a rate below the district average. Hispanic Latinx students had a rate just slightly above the district average, and all other student groups had a rate above the district average, with the largest disparity existing for the foster youth students. And now that we have heard about the context leading to these data and seeing the data points representative of our academic achievement and school climate, I will turn it back over to John Tornatore to share how we are responding.
Okay, so so far in this presentation, we have shared and situated the results of our data in the context of the events and challenges we experienced last year. Now for the final part of our presentation this evening, we would like to share with you how we are responding to the data, specifically the actions, the programs, the services, and interventions we are implementing to address the academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students, especially for our targeted student groups. To address the disparities for our student subgroups and improve overall student performance in ELA and math, we are implementing actions that include professional learning, coaching, and collaboration for teachers focused on instruction aligned to the ELA, History, Social Science, and Math frameworks. We are providing tier one and two academic interventions through our multi-tiered system of support, as well as a universal screener for dyslexia, effective instructional practices such as co-teaching and universal design for learning, which are differentiated and inclusive approaches to teaching and learning, tutoring, flex periods, and diagnostics to provide targeted small group instruction to students, and instructional assistance in our elementary and K eight schools to provide additional support to students as well. To meet the academic and language needs of our English learners with various profiles, we are implementing intervention and enrichment opportunities to accelerate English language proficiency, such as summer math camp, camp invention, ALPAC bootcamp, after-school tutoring, and Saturday classes. We have bilingual instructional assistance to provide scaffolds and supports focused on literacy and academic discourse, school community resource assistance to build relationships and partnerships with our EL community, and students and families with resources and tools to navigate the American system. We also have additional staff and professional learning to support integrated and designated English language development using the EL roadmap, content standards, universal design for learning framework, and guided language acquisition design. And finally, parent engagement workshops focused on how to support instructional learning at home. In response to our chronic absenteeism data, we are implementing actions that include transportation for our foster youth and homeless students using outside ride service contracts, staffing and community partnerships to expand access to resources, programs, and services, regular meetings with families in their home language to provide resources such as technology devices, internet access to students, free bus passes, food, and clothing, services such as mental health support, translators, and alternative education programs, and interventions by engaging students and families in co-creating home routines and plans. And finally, increasing communication by coordinating our outreach efforts across the district through our FaceMobile, parent workshops, and social media, and at the site level through our school leaders, teachers, counselors, social workers, and staff. And finally, in response to our suspension data, we are providing schools with a multi-tiered system of social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health supports. These include district services to students such as counseling, services, mentoring programs, K through twelve support center services, which which has expanded from a K eight service to include grades nine through twelve, additional staff to support schools with reviewing data and aligning resources to the data, implementing social emotional learning programs such as Second Step, peer mediators, and Safe School ambassadors, professional development such as alternative practices to suspension focused on positive behavioral interventions and supports known as PBIS, restorative practices, and de-escalation training. We have network improvement communities focused on continuous improvement practices that support our African American students and students with disabilities, unconscious bias training, and culturally responsive and restorative strategies to support safety planning, training, and student supervision. And then finally, zooming out to our overarching district response to the data, state and federal relief acts have provided districts with unprecedented increases in funding to address the impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic. San Juan, in partnership with the community, has created a comprehensive, multi-year plan that braids the various funds, actions, services, and strategies from our local control and accountability plan, elementary and secondary school emergency relief plan, and expanded learning opportunities plan focused on increasing and expanding site-level staffing to support academic, social, emotional, mental health needs, local control at the site level to address targeted student insight needs, opportunities for targeted intervention supports, summer offerings, enrichment opportunities, supplemental curriculum materials and supplies, and community partnerships. As a district, we will continue to monitor and refine our plans and actions based on what we learn so that we can prove outcomes for our targeted student groups and more broadly, all students in San Juan. So at the start of this presentation, I highlighted three key points as takeaways. One, that the COVID nineteen had a huge impact on teaching, learning, and testing. Two, the results of our data were not surprising. They confirmed what we expected, and they were consistent with state and county results. And three, we anticipated and planned actions to address both the short-term and long-term impacts of the pandemic. Why do these matter? Understanding what happened last year helps us make sense of this year's results so that we can implement the right actions moving forward. The bottom line is that in spite of the pandemic, our work around equity continues. We will remain focused on removing barriers and creating pathways so that all students can succeed, regardless of who they are, where they're from, or what their background and circumstances might be. So President McKibben, this concludes our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions from the board. Thank you all.
Questions, comments from the board? Ms. Fiascas?
Thank you for the team for for the presentation. And I'll start with a comment, but I do have some questions as well, which is just, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty difficult data to to read. And you open and closed, Dr. Tornatore, with the comment of or with the remark that the data was not surprising. And I just want to say that that's a sentiment that that I share, but want to make sure to point out that that doesn't mean we're dismissing it, or that I have any plan to dismiss it, or minimize it in any way, or just say, well, that's just the way it is. And everything here, including the very thoughtful sort of next steps and ways to to tackle this and the responding to the data presentation, you know, was inclusive of that as well. But that's just to say, I think it's important for our community to hear that just because it's not surprising, or just because it's consistent with other information, doesn't mean that it's not something that requires significant and ongoing action. I recognize how important that is and how challenging that is, and we certainly have our work cut out for us. And so, as you noted, this will start as sort of baseline data. Some of the context you provided at the front was certainly very helpful, both the timeline, but even just the logistics and challenges of the two different systems talking to each other, or in this instance, not talking to each other and not appropriately identifying our students. I think some of the other things, just to acknowledge is some of the context that was set out was the six months immediately prior to CAS testing, right? It doesn't reflect the two years of complete chaos that preceded that. That is, of course, reflected in these achievement numbers. And we cannot underestimate the impact that changing instructional strategies two to three times in the course of as many school years has on our data. And that's also what we're seeing here. So while it's hard to look at, we will confront it head-on and and grow from it and continue to improve. Some of the kind of questions that I just had, I'll narrow in specifically on at first slide fourteen and the ELA data and just, you know, the biggest drop here from our eighteen nineteen to twenty one twenty two numbers was, of course, grades three through five. And I have assumptions that I've made and why that's the biggest drop, but would love to hear any additional context that there might be, you know, specific to those grade levels and any strategies we might have targeting that those specific grade levels in particular.
Right. So one of those possible factors that may have contributed to this decrease was that this was the first time that many of these students were taking the CASP for the first time because of the suspension of the of CASP. Whereas many of our high school students, this would not have been their first time taking the test. With regard to some of the actions that we're putting in place with regard to ELA to specifically address this, we do have a lot of professional learning that will continue to focus on these particular grade spans aligned to the the frameworks. We also have our tier one and two academic interventions in place, especially as well as our tutoring, the flex periods, and diagnostics that we will be using to meet students where they're at right now and then help push their learning forward as we continue. And then also, right now, we do have instructional assistance in our elementary and K eight schools as well to provide that additional support that our younger students may need right now because they didn't have those experiences as many of our older students had.
Great. And on that note, for the last three to four weeks, I've had the privilege of visiting all nine schools that are kind of in my quote-unquote area. And one of the things that consistently both ask about, but heard a refrain about was what folks are doing with their ELO funds and what happens next. And there's a tremendous amount of anxiety in the system on what happens next after that, because the thing that I heard almost universally was that they were paying for the very supports that were listed out on the responding to the data components, those additional people, that additional instructional support. And that, of course, is limited term funding. And so it seems very tied to our responding to the data components. And I know we still have a lot of work to do on that point, but I welcome any thoughts or remarks on kind of sort of what happens next, both how we're evaluating the success of the ELO funding now and what that might look like in the future.
So thank you for that. We're in year two of the implementation of our ELO SHER plans. And so we have ELO coordinators whose task is to follow up with sites in terms of the implementation of actions and to assist sites in progress monitoring as we will be collecting that data, as well as getting just voices from the field in terms of what have been in the most impactful actions. Knowing that we do have funds because of staffing shortages and delays in implementation, we have additional one-time funds that are falling to the bottom line that we can use to extend out the plan to an additional year or two in addition to the additional funding that we just received around learning loss recovery. So it's our intent to really lean in, listen around what our sites value, what they find to be effective. Because in addition to instructional assistance, they also have increased staffing. Every single site has increased staffing through these additional dollars. So we want to really learn about what's effective, what do they value most, and then how can we build that out with additional funds, keeping in mind that we also have opportunities to look inside our LCAB and identify if there are actions that we are currently implementing that may not be as impactful as the actions that we're implementing in the ELO SHER plan. We will write size in the LCAB to make space for actions to be able to continue those.
Ms. Bassinelli, speak a little bit too as well, the potential concentration dollars that will be coming to us. The good news that we kind of are rebounding from what had happened from the pandemic as well.
We've had a team of staff, as well as school sites, that have worked so incredibly diligently to get income verification information from our families this year. The deadline for that information is October thirty first. Prelimarily, it looks like we are trending upwards in terms of our unduplicated count. And so it is possible that in the out years that we'll receive concentration dollars, if that does come to fruition, we would also look to those funds to be able to help us continue the implementation of some of these actions.
And for the first time ever, there was even B coverage today about the forms and getting folks to fill them out and make sure that all of our students and their status and their family's status are reflected. And that was the first time I'd ever seen that, but was certainly grateful. And certainly any other ways that I could be supportive in sort of getting the word out here in the last week or so, just because I know that'll be critical. But I think fundamentally, I want to make sure that sort of the system kind of hears that there's an intent to continue to support what's working.
Yes.
And that's certainly a commitment that that I want to make and make sure is part of of the discussion. So appreciate the additional context moving forward. And then my last comment is really just, there's a lot to unpack here for sure. But I think the one thing I will just end with is, you know, in particular, the home suspension and the in-school suspension data continues to to be a significant challenge and just hard to read. And I know this is an improvement from eighteen nineteen, which I think just underscores the amount of work we still have to do on this, particularly when you look at the disproportionality among some of our groups. So I look forward to continued updates on on those efforts because it's, there's a lot here that's sort of hard to digest, but that's definitely one of them.
If I could just add an additional action that we're implementing this year and specifically in response to suspension data is we have an administrator on special assignment who is working very closely with specifically our secondary schools because that's where we saw the upward trend in analyzing their data on a regular basis and really focusing on preventative strategies to implement, as well as restorative practices so that we can, we have real-time actions happening right now. So we we too share that concern. We have implemented additional strategies to address it, and we are hopeful that we'll see improved data.
Let me share a little story from early in the year when we talk about leadership matters at schools as well. I was visiting Katherine Johnson Middle School a couple of weeks into the year, and I was speaking with Damon, and they had a student, I think, on the third or fourth day of school who dropped a bag of marijuana out of his pocket, fell on the floor, teacher picked it up, teacher called administration. What would normally happen? Five-day suspension, student goes home, misses learning, you know, contributes to chronic absenteeism, potentially contributes to the suspension rate. This was a student the previous year, and we really struggled at Katherine Johnson in terms of excessive suspension the previous year. Damon met with the teacher and said, we're not going to suspend this kid. We're going to send this kid back to class. His punishment is he's going to lose that. The teacher was fully supportive of that. And when I met with Damon, he talked about this student had realized that his negative actions weren't always going to result in a suspension, and they were seeing a true change in his behavior. So now that student is in school learning for those five days. And so those are some of the alternatives that we really, we've been working on. We're working really hard prior to the pandemic, even having Epic Education with the Dome Sisters coming out, doing a lot of training with us. But that's an area where we've got to continue to work on, and we're seeing some real positive examples of that occurring in schools. And when we hear that, that's, there's multiple stories like that that I that I could share, but people realizing that that type of consequence isn't changing behavior, and so it's not resulting in any positives.
And thank you for sharing that. I think in in general, a kid can't learn if they're not on school. And so anything that results in less class time is certainly not going to improve the academic trajectory. So I appreciate the context, and I also just want to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work happening every day at our sites with both our administrators and the teachers and the people supporting them. Because what I've seen in my visits, in particular, at school site campuses is there's a ton of effort being made every single day to support each other, to support the entire school community, support our parents, support our students. And a lot of that is And a lot of that is stuff that doesn't get reflected in the data sometimes. And that doesn't mean that it's not extraordinarily significant or impactful to our students every single day. And that I just want to take an opportunity to acknowledge that as well. And I've gone on quite a bit, so I'm going to turn it to my colleagues.
Other questions are coming. Okay, Ms. Creason.
I don't think I really have questions. I was going to say a bunch of stuff in a very disorderly fashion, and I'm sorry. This is such sad news. And yeah, we did know. I mean, it's not, yeah, it's just shocking and hard to look at, you know, that's for sure. But we did know this was coming. But I agree with my colleague, that doesn't mean that we're dismissing or minimizing the major concern. So the governor put out a statement today talking about all the money that was dumped in to address learning loss. And the headline talks about, you know, this is a nationwide problem, but we're not quite as bad as everybody else. It's still really bad. But I do, I'm pointing this out just to say, this is a nationwide problem, not just a Sacramento problem or just a California problem. It's everywhere. And we we got to be real too, you know, the the scores weren't great prior to the pandemic, and we're just getting worse. And again, that's a nationwide problem, not just an S J U S D problem. And although, of course, I'm happy that, you know, education is starting to receive the funding it deserved. But the way we received it and all the planning that had to happen really, really fast. I mean, you can't just throw money at something all the time and expect it. Not saying take the money back, we could, we'll figure it out, we will use the money. But just throwing money at a problem doesn't always fix it immediately. And it hasn't, it's only been a couple of years, and we're still in this pandemic, and people still are missing time, you know, on the workforce side as well as the student side. So it's just a lot, you know, and I know a lot of this money is meant for staff. You know, we need people, we need hands on deck to help IAs and others. And we don't have the workforce to do the job, to spend the money, which was brought up during the presentation. So there's there's so many layers to this. There's so many layers. Another note I have is, you know, kids are still, kids and the adults in the room are still struggling with the mental health app impacts. That didn't just go away. That's still, it was a problem prior to the pandemic. It's just been exacerbated. So it's hard to learn and excel and thrive when you're still dealing with all these things. I told you that this is going to be really convoluted, but I want to see most of these notes. I got to say, the concentration dollars, I know that it always gets me because I know we need those dollars. And I mean, it's so important that we get the data, and it's just real. But for folks that don't know what that means, that means that we have a lot of folks living the struggle. It's, you know, that you get concentration dollars, that number goes up when your community is really struggling. And this mean, what is the percentage it has to be before we get? Over fifty-five percent over three years? So that means we are getting close to over fifty-five percent for three years? Did I say that right?
Yeah, well, we're, for this current year, we're going, we're getting close to fifty-seven or fifty-eight. But it's got to be a three-year average. That's the unduplicated count. So it's low-income, E L, foster youth and homeless, a combination of all those groups. And again, we had gone over a three-year average, and then I think the previous two years, we were back down to like fifty-three, fifty-two. So staff really has worked hard, and it is, it's it's, what you've said is exactly right. But there are really benefits for our community when we're able to access those funds.
Yeah, no, and I thank you for saying that, and I don't want to downplay it's like, yes, we need the money and yes, totally agree. But it's just sad, and I want, I just feel like it needs to be said that our community is, over fifty-five percent of our community is not making a living wage, you know, that fifty-five percent, that's a lot, that's that's astounding. That is, and we're expecting our kids to somehow grow out of that. And somehow, when they leave their doors, that they could get a good job with that good wage. And I just, I just, it's just such a reality check of where we are as a community and a society. So there's that. I'll try to start condensing my notes because there's a lot. I do want to note, you know, the issue with chronic absenteeism, and it really kind of bugs me that the state didn't give us some grace there because I think a lot of folks were trying to do the best that they could to be responsible. You know, I know I was in our house if my kid was sick, even if he wasn't testing positive. You know, being very, very mindful not to send them, we'll keep them home, you know, just trying really hard to not get other people sick. And to get, you know, that's us doing what we were told to do. And to think that we are not, that we're being penalized for that is just not fair. CASP, and I've said it once, and I'm going to say it again, is just education, the way we do education in the United States is just a trip. It just really is, you know, I would love, and I know that that's not an S J U S D issue, this is a nationwide issue. But I would love for us to reimagine education so that we're delivering education, working with employers. We're figuring out what are the high road jobs, what is the workforce demand? We're projecting those numbers, we're projecting, we're projecting where, you know, what the workforce needs to be in the future. And that we're working with them and we're reimagining education so that we're, you know, making sure kids get the course curriculum and the content, including life skills, but based on what happens when they leave our doors. So there really is that connectivity to work, like a strong connectivity to work. And that the education is grounded in that. So it's not just kind of this nebulous math class that's really tied to a job. Even if, you know, and it can be transferable, you know, it doesn't have to be, you know, because kids change their mind, adults change their mind. Maybe, you know, they're not going to want to do what they chose and continue to do what they chose in a freshman year. They want to change their course, but can we ground it in more than this very nebulous way of how we teach so that really is applicable? And that, you know, ethnic studies is such a huge component, so important. Like, can we teach ethnic studies within math, within English? So it's embedded in everything we do. And I really believe a hundred percent that that's what's going to get kids to learn different and be able to demonstrate competency differently. And that goes back to, you know, my com- comment that I want to make on CASP. You know, in second, post-secondary education, there is a real conversation of how fair is it to best base competency on one test? And it's not a good indicator. Now, I know that, and this not to dismiss that the challenges that we're seeing, those are real. But basing competency on one test just isn't fair. I promise I'm almost a Dr. McKibben. I think I'll leave it at this one. I echo my colleagues' concerns about the one-time funding, and I've said it on this dais before. And I've said it in my day job a million times, we've dumped a lot of money into some really good stuff. And what happens when we rip it away? You know, are our folks going to be worse off than they, when they started? So I'm really excited that we're looking at what's working and reassessing how we allocate dollars so that we could continue to fund what is working. But I continue to worry, you know, it's a lot of money we're going to be, we're getting right now. And I love that, you know, we're going to be able to shift some of that in the next year. But that's not going to be the case forever unless somehow there's an advocacy effort that, you know, really pushes the state to do what they said they were going to do and fund education. First, so hopefully we can make that case. I will stop there. This is just really sad. And I was taking notes, you know, when I was going over my backboard packet, but listening to you talk made me think more. I appreciate all that you have done, and this report is really comprehensive, and that's why I'm not walking away with questions. I'm just walking away with tremendous sadness that this is where we are as we continue to navigate the pandemic and just education as a whole.
Ms. Costa.
I'm going to try. I have not talked to any teacher or any principal or any cabinet member. And since we can't talk to each other, I haven't talked to any board members, but I've heard it tonight. The results are not anything that we can be happy about, and we were expecting it. And it came about. But when you look at what our students went through during the pandemic and what our staffs went through, what the whole community went through, this shouldn't be a surprise. What I know about this team is, and I saw it tonight as as you were doing the presentation, you're already digging into the context to understand the causes so we can make decisions based on what will most impact student learning. And I'm so grateful that we have a team that's able to do that. I know this is our baseline, and I know you'll monitor the progress. Can you tell us some of the, I I use the term formative assessment, but some of the goals and strategies means that you will use to monitor along the way and how you will communicate that to us and to our parent community that we're making progress, that we're on the right track?
Well, the overarching process that we're using to to monitor progress for our students is we're using our equity-driven continuous improvement approach. And what that means specifically is that in addition to focusing on improving student achievement, of course, we're also focusing on student experiences, the way students feel when they're at school, their sense of belonging. And as well also the student access to opportunities, to educational programs in our system. So we look at achievement, experiences and opportunities. We're using a lot of qualitative and quantitative data, both at the the state level, the district level, the school level, and even in the classroom level. So that would include everything from some of the data we shared with you this evening. But that could also include some of the tools that we use at the district level, such as I Ready and text level data. But then even at the classroom level, you could have your unit assessments, listening sessions with students and 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 check-ins with our students.
This just came to me tonight when I was listening to the presentation, and I think I already know the answer. And I probably you'll laugh when I ask the question. But is there an appeal process for what happened with the data for our E L students where it was basically a state error? Is there a way for us to appeal that?
I'm not sure if there's a way to appeal that. I know that our staff has been working with the state to work through that. So if there is an appeal process, we will certainly hear about it and work through that process. But as of today, that that that's not an option for us.
It just feels criminal to hold us accountable for their mistake. And I know that's, probably they wouldn't agree with me on that statement. But I I think that they share a responsibility in in that. I really want to thank you for a very comprehensive report. You, obviously, this whole team is working very, very hard to look at the data and not just look at it and go into panic mode, but actually to go back and look at root causes, look at what we can do and look at how we're using our dollars right now to support our students and make sure we're doing the right things with the dollars. So thank you very, very much.
What they said. And I want to talk and see how we translate this. One of the things I appreciate in your presentation was you're constantly talking about these data as diagnostic things. And I want to talk a little bit about how this translates into everyday practice and everyday work by teachers using these data to help our kids get better and grow and and how we and frankly, how we determine whether we've made a difference or not. And I, and and the, that's one of the things that our new testing materials, the CASP and so forth, even go back to the smarter, was designed to do so that we have better tools in order to do what we're supposed to be doing with assessment, and that is using it to di- and for a diagnostic purpose in order to make our instruction better. And I want to see, ask a question that may not be able to be answered is, and that is, how do we translate these data into action things at the classroom level? The way the teachers can pour over that and the way the students know that they have work to do? How does this translate into the classroom and into day-to-day operations?
So it's important to understand that this state data, it's a conversation starter. This is not the answer to, it's not going to provide us the answers to what we're looking at, but it's a conversation starter. So to take you through that process, that would be that school sites would look at some of the state data see a potential problem or an a wondering or a question might come about for that data. They would then dig a little bit deeper into some of our more local data, such as our I Ready and text level data to kind of hone in a little bit more about what specific students might be needing some support. And then that gets brought into the classroom level. And that's where the real magic happens with our teachers, who really are the experts in the room to know the specific assessments and tools that need to be used to appropriately respond to student needs and then make adjustments in their own instruction based off of the assessments that they, and data that they use at that point.
Let me just layer a little bit more in. And so with, for example, with the I Ready data that was mentioned, sites also with the I Ready suite have the personal learning program that goes with it. So when they look at the data, the end of year data, and they also are implementing the assessment at the start of the year, they're able to get a better picture around the strengths and areas of opportunities for students. And then they can use the the personal learning program in I Ready to design custom lessons and sessions for students to engage in that are aligned to what they see in the student data. So that's one example of how it's it's drilled down real time for teachers to use in the classroom with students.
So in terms of our our assessment data, we're getting more data in real time within the school year so that we can use it. It's not, we get last year's data next year.
Correct, yeah. So sites received preliminary data at the start of the school year, and they were already digging into it with their site leadership teams and with their teachers. Teachers were deconstructing it to, as a starting point, as a launchpad, as Gianfranco mentioned, to kind of set the table for the school year. But they are utilizing assessments along the way that are either, it could be additional I Ready, it could be additional running record assessments. It also could be other assessment tools and practices that they're using in the classroom that measure more granular pieces of information that help them design their lessons and respond to student need.
So and and the teachers on their thirsty afternoons and the different types, and that's so they are looking at each other's data, doing this at at grade level and and subject level areas. That's part of how we're doing things now in terms of not only their professional development, but their own analysis, right?
Yeah, and that's locally driven based off of the staff input and the leadership from the site leadership team. That includes teachers and administrators.
Okay, so we've got, we put money into some things that I think are going to truly pay off. For example, the instructional assistance at the early grades and so forth. What kinds of, and and I think the tutoring is going to make a difference. I think there are a number, you talked about the extended learning time and and learning loss recovery. How? How do we know what made a difference?
Well, some, that's a hard one. And I think that's where it goes back to both qualitative and quantitative information. Looking at student data is just a piece of it. I think listening to our community in terms of what's been impactful and what about it has been impactful. As was mentioned, part of our equity work is improving the experiences and opportunities for students. So it's not just looking at assessment data. It is considering what has the implementation of an instructional assistant in the classroom? What, how has that elevated the experiences for students? What do students say about that? What do our teachers say about that? What do our families say about that? So it's taking a holistic look at the picture and not just looking only at particular data sets.
I'm having a moment a little bit like what Ms. Costa had in terms of, we we talk a good deal about student voice advocates and so forth. Have we ever tried to ask the students about what seems to make a difference to them in terms of what they're learning?
Yes, so we've done a lot of that in our LCAP work, but I will tell you, our sites are really, they value student voice. And so many of our sites are doing their own listening sessions with students, asking them those very questions.
Because, you know, we asked them about, a lot about the the mental health things and and the social emotional kinds of things. But I I know as a teacher, I didn't spend a lot of time asking the students, what's, how are you learning the best? And and that, there may be something there that that with our whole concentration on voice, that we may be able to to get some information that I I certainly while during my teaching years didn't collect or didn't even try to collect and so on. So there's, these data show that there's got to be a better way. And and I think that, you know, the things that we've talked about, about making sure that the the parents know what we're doing, but also the whole idea of 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 understanding that it's, this is- that it's, this is all of our issue, including the students and so forth, and and not being afraid to ask the questions and so forth. I was struck, I believe it was around slide six, when we were talking about, there seemed to be a difference in some of the behaviors. For example, the restorative behavior seemed to have affected some of the instructional behaviors. And and I I think that that was, and I may not have it exactly correct, but it was, it struck me that that indeed there was a confluence there that that we probably haven't mined. I'm sorry, I'm thinking out loud right here, but.
I wasn't sure if you had a question for me, so I was waiting.
Thank you, I'll stop there before I get more. But, yeah. Okay, thank you very much. We'll look forward to continuing this discussion because it's, it is what we're about.
Thank you.
John, do you want to close? Is there anything more that you want?
No.
Okay, all right, we're going to move on to I four, Mr. Kamara.
Thank you, and good evening, President McKibben, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, Ms. Cunningham. Tonight's facilities item is an action item pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Notice of an intent to adopt a mitigated negative declaration was circulated to the State Clearing House, Sacramento County Clerk, Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, Sacramento County, and potentially interested Native American tribal representatives for review. There was a 30-day public review period. That period was from September 21st through October 20th, and that process did not produce any comment letters on that M and D. The initial study mitigated negative declaration determined that the proposed project would not result in any significant environmental impacts that could not be mitigated to a less than significant impact on the environment. So with that, board members, the superintendent is recommending that the board adopt Resolution Number 4044, adopting the California Environmental Quality Act mitigated negative declaration, including a mitigated monitoring and reporting program consisting of approval of findings that the project will not have a significant effect on the environment. I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have, and I have Director of Facilities, Mr. Nicholas Arps here as well. Thank you, Board.
Questions from the board? If there are no questions, then this is indeed an action item. As Mr. Kamara has just repeated it, I will not do it now. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Viascas. And the motion was made by?
Yeah.
Ms. Costa. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it is approved four to zero. We move now to item I five related to Arcade Fundamental.
Thank you again, President McKibben and board members. This is the exciting part. With the mitigated negative declaration being certified, approved by the board, we can move on to the construction of the new arcade. So with that, the superintendent is recommending that the board adopt Resolution Number 4045, approving the Second Amendment to the lease agreement for Arcade Fundamental Middle School for the new construction project between San Juan Unified School District and Clark and Sullivan Construction. And I have Director Nicholas Arps here and myself. We can answer any questions that the board may have.
Are there any questions for the board? Ms. Viascas.
No question, just a comment, having recently visited Arcade, I'm really excited to see this through. I know the campus is excited for it. I know it's going to be a challenging year accommodating all of the changes, but everyone's looking forward to being on the other side of it. And more importantly, the big difference it'll make for all of our students. So I'm excited about that, and I would be happy to move Resolution Number 4045.
It has been moved by Ms. Viascas, is there a second? Second by Ms. Creason. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, it is passed four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Costa. We move on to I six, board bylaws related to meeting conduct. Ms. Similac.
Thank you, and good evening, President McKibben, board members, Superintendent Kern, Ms. Cunningham. Bringing forward to you Board Bylaw 9323. As you recall, there was some discussion about some of the recommendations that were made to this bylaw. Based on some of those discussions, there were a couple of changes that I made. I wanted to point out, number one, on the third page, I did put back in the 30 minutes, which was the original language from our original board bylaw, instead of changing it to CSBA recommendations of 20 minutes. I did realize after the meeting that part of the CSBA recommendations had been left out of the the copy that you received last time. That was on the first page where it talks about adjourning a board meeting at 10:30 in the evening. That's again, language from CSBA. That's something that's totally up to the board, whether you want to keep that in there or not. I could answer any questions for you.
Questions, comments from the board?
You're not going to like this. So I would like to propose one of two amendments. Ideally, I would like to see us do away with the 10:30 end time. I think the board should just do its business. I recognize, you know, it can be a late night. I like the idea of maybe not in board policy, having a standing agreement. You know, we don't schedule out agenda items super late. I think we've been good at that, and I think we're getting even better. We're not overpacking our agenda. We already have timeframes for public comment. I know we're expanding the board, so discussion may run longer. But I do have concerns about this end time. If there is discomfort with just doing away with the 10:30, then I would ask that we don't cap the number of times the meeting can be extended based on a vote of the board. So it doesn't, I mean, then we have the option and it'd be a vote. So those are my two, one of, one of the others what I would propose, and I I appreciate your consideration.
Ms. Viascas.
I thought that I understand the 10:30 language as it is here. I'm not entirely certain that it's it's necessary. So I would, sounded like you had a couple of different suggestions, but I wouldn't have any objection to taking that part out.
What are you going to say, Seth?
One of the things that I wonder is, in the past, this is on a totally different bent, but it's another potential amendment. In the past, when we have extended visitor comment time, we've always extended it by the full 30 minutes. I'm wondering if we extended it by 15-minute increments, half of the 30, 15-minute increment, that it comes back to, did not mean to do that. It comes back to the board for another vote to see if we want to increase by another 15 minutes. Again, another 15 minutes, again, another 15 minutes. I'm just wondering if that wouldn't shorten, which would also make the meeting go more smoothly. It it does, it also helps to remind the public that if they're saying the same thing that 15 other people have said, it may not have as big of an impact as as one representative and everybody stands up. But I'm thinking that if we, if we set a 15-minute increment, and we might very well extend it by 45 minutes or an hour anyhow, but at least that becomes part of our procedure as a board.
Ms. Costa, one of the things in in asking around a little bit that I found some districts do is when they extend time, because much like you said, and I'm thinking back to some of the meetings we had at El Camino, where it just seemed redundant for a long period of time. They actually reduce the amount of time once they extend. So let's say we, we say you've got, but instead of having two minutes, you have a minute. So individuals still get an opportunity to say their voice, but they're they're like, okay, at this point, I have to be a little more succinct rather than going through everything again. Just a thought, some have done that, but it's it's still the will of the board.
What did you think about the 10:30?
I liked your amendment, please, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
She asked me the question, what about the 10:30? I liked your amendment that the board have the opportunity to extend.
Many times.
And that more than once. I I think that makes sense to me. And I hadn't considered that, so I appreciated your amendment.
Okay, I, I, I. The reason why I I I went to the 30 minutes is because frankly, we haven't had that many times that 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 the public wanted to say something. So if they wanted to say something, I think we ought to ought to give them the time that they have. And I'm not sure that I agree with the notion of 10:30 as long as we have the opportunity to extend it. Because I think there are times that when the item is fresh and we're talking about it, it doesn't make a great deal of sense to to postpone it to another time because we may have to repeat what we did did before. So I think we ought to continue on. So I like your idea of of extension. I also like the idea of, after we go past the first 30 minutes, to say that that the time will be reduced to one minute rather than two. That makes a great deal of sense to me because I think it also says to the public is that that please come with your thoughts prepared and and be mindful that you're not getting anywhere by repeating what somebody else has said, the third or fourth or fifth or whatever time it is. So help me with the procedures now. If we make, we can make amendments to this here today just by having a motion and a second and a vote on those.
Yes, absolutely. We just need, I need to make sure and I understand what what it is you all are agreeing to.
Can we do another round now that we've heard all of each other talk?
Absolutely. Would you like to start, Ms. Viascas?
I was going to make an amendment that I, or suggest an amendment and make a motion. But if people want to continue discussing, we can certainly do that. I think where I land is again, removing the 10:30 adjournment requirement and adding the 15-minute increment beyond the initial 30 minutes of public comment and limiting it to one minute each. Those are my thoughts.
Is is that in the form of a motion? We can still discuss it, but.
It was not because I understood that people wanted to go another round.
Want to continue on, okay.
When the time is right, I'm happy to, if it meets the needs of my colleagues.
Let's hear from our colleagues and then we'll go back.
I actually like, I'm sorry.
I didn't do.
I actually like Ms. Viascas's suggestion.
Ms. Creason?
Um, I prefer the doing the way, doing away with the 10:30, but appreciate the compromise that we can extend it as long as we want want to or need to. So I think I find landing there on either one of those. I do have concerns about the, I mean, I I prefer to leave it at 30 minutes, but as a thank you, you know, and for us to just, you know, to compromise, I would say okay to the 15, but I'm hoping we cannot do the one minute. And the reason why is because it's really the luck of the drawl, who gets called when, right? And so if you just didn't get lucky enough to get called in the first 30 minutes, even if you're not saying the same thing, because we don't know, then you only get one minute. So I mean, I just don't know that it's fair, that it's based on just how you get called. If you get two minutes or one, that's my concern.
I think one thing that I've observed as we've seen us go beyond 30 minutes is that there are people who haven't even submitted a card, and we can be past 60 minutes, and then all of a sudden they hear something, they go, oh, now I have, it's, they don't have those pre plan planned thoughts, and they come and they use two minutes because they have it. And I think at times I've seen that frustrate individuals. And and that may be why some others do that as well.
And I guess my thought is, I can only remember in my time in the board, us extending the time at two meetings, if I remember that correctly.
I think we did it when we were.
Definitely at El Camino.
El Camino, and then I think we did it a couple of times during COVID.
A couple of times, okay.
Yeah.
It isn't that often.
It isn't that often, but during COVID, there was probably, there could have been four or five times, but.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so I just, yeah.
All right. A motion is always in order, or unless we want to continue on with the discussion.
I move to approve the revisions to Board Bylaw 9323 as amended to remove the 10:30 adjournment requirement discussed on the first page and to add 15-minute increments to public input extensions beyond the initial 30-minute comment period.
Is there a second?
Oh, can I repeat to make sure I got it right?
Yeah, I would love that.
What I thought I heard is removing the 10:30, and then we get the the public comment time. It still remains the 30 minutes, but the extensions are every 15 minutes or in 15-minute blocks. I'll second that.
Is there discussion on this amendment? Seeing no discussion. Ms. Similac, will you repeat it as you understand it before we go?
Just to make sure I clarify, on the first page, the second, the, excuse me, the third paragraph will be eliminated. Okay, and then on the third page, under paragraph five, the language will change to, let's see, however, in exceptional circumstances were necessary to ensure full opportunity for public input, the board president made with, may with board consent, and I think that should be with the majority of the board.
Yes.
To make it clear. Just the amount of time allowed in 15-minute increments.
I voted the board. Okay. Is that clear to?
Sure, I had envisioned it as just this next sentence after the 30 minutes, but that that works and I think captures the intent, so yes.
Okay, are we, are we ready to vote? Getting nods. All those in favor of this amended as stated by Ms. Similac? Signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? It is agreed to by a four to zero motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that? Please, I'm sorry. Related to the Teamsters tentative agreement, Mr. Sigpen.
Good evening, President McKibben, board members, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. I'm happy to be here tonight, and I'll stay as long as you need to present the superintendent's recommendation that the board approved tentative agreement between the Teamsters Union Local 150 and the San Juan Unified School District. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Do we have any questions from the board related to Teamsters agreement?
I have 30 questions in a series of order that I'm going to take one by one. Each one will take two minutes. No, I don't have any questions. I just felt the need to tease Mr. Sigpen since he was teasing us.
I'm ready, it's not even, we got an hour and a half until.
I'm happy, I have no comments or questions and happy to move the item when appropriate.
Before we get any more punchy, this is an action item.
She already moved the item.
Did she, did she move?
And I will second the item.
Very good, it's seconded by by Ms. Costa.
Thank you for the hard work.
Yes. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, it is approved four to zero. Moving on to I eight, related to San Juan Administrators Association.
Yes, this is the second and final action item. This is the superintendent's recommendation to approve salary schedule adjustments for San Juan Administrators Association and Cabinet.
Are there any questions or comments? Are there any questions or comments? This too is an action item.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Creason, seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And it is four to zero. We're moving on to Board Reports, I believe. I'm sorry, let me get my, let me go back to my script. Am I right? Boarder Reports. Ms. Viascas?
Thank you. I kind of covered some of mine in my, in remarks earlier throughout the presentations, but throughout the last six weeks or so, I've been able to visit a number of schools, including Cameron Ranch Mission, Whitney Churchill, De Paso Manor, Pasadena Arcade, Cowan and Miraloma. And just want to take the opportunity to say thank you to all of those teams that let me be part of their day. Throughout each, the conversations have been wide ranging, including everything from sort of me asking about facilities and, and school safety and how folks made it through some of the inclement weather that we saw in August and September. Asking that with the framework of guessing that high degree temperatures and poor air quality or some, or challenges we're going to have to continue to face moving down the road and how do we address those challenges? Discussing ELO funding at length, how it's being used, what's going well, some of the challenges. Getting a sense of the impact of start times on the different sites. And there's been a lot of arranging. Most people are, are making it work for sure, but even how it's impacted lunchtimes and all these other things that we knew would be part of the impact, but continue to be sort of ironed out and then also seeing how folks are doing in terms of serving students with special needs and special education. So wide range of topics to be discussed. Just want to thank each of those teams for letting me be part of their days and looking forward to more site visits. It really does help add context to some of the numbers that we see here at the dais when you see it at work directly in the classroom. I think that's it for my board report. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Costa?
I just wanted to mention that our colleague, Mr. Hernandez, has been on the board for 10 years and this is his first absence in 10 years.
Wow.
So, and for a very touching reason. So I just wanted to hold a good thought for him as he is dealing with loss of family member.
Very nice. Thank you very much.
I feel pretty insensitive going after that, so don't fault me for what I'm about to say. It's not bad. But thank you for that, Ms. Costa. Totally agree. I had the pleasure of visiting the Del Campo Library and met with librarian Veal, Brandy Veal, and just a wonderful program she's got going on. So I'm not going to get into all the details, but she does these really great carts that are very specific to certain themes. And she was just such a pleasure to go and talk to and meet with. And there was a couple of students, I came at a time where school was letting out, it was during finals block school, right? And so there was a couple of students in there just getting work done and watching the relationship between her and this couple of students and really just was moving. Librarians do a lot, you know, and we're really lucky to have her. She, she was really a pleasure and she's doing some really neat stuff at the school. So thank you, Ms. Veal. I hope you hear this. Arden Park Festival, I got the opportunity to attend this festival and it was nothing like I expected it to be. I thought it was going to be, you know, like you go to an elementary school and you know, you throw some bean bags around. I'm like, all right, I'm here for it. No, 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 no. I mean, they had like 12 inflatables and like this craft fair and a garden of beverages. I'll leave it at that. And it was really a whole thing, food trucks. It was really something and really well attended. So many families were there. So I definitely will be going back to that event. I know a ton of work went to it. So much of our school communities were there. So if you could check it up next year, I would be happy to roll with you. CAC is really busy. The last meeting was the, the most full I think I've ever seen that room, that meeting. So lots of great work and just special thanks to communications team that came out and special thanks to the special education team that does a lot of work and all, of course, all of the volunteers that make up the committee and that showed up that night and continue to do the work. And I also just want to acknowledge Diwali. So it's the Festival of Lights. It's an Indian, India for India, my people, my daddy's people holiday. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that it's the Festival of Lights.
That, wanted to mention some of the things that Ms. Bassinelli and I attended the middle school cross-country event last Wednesday, Thursday? Thursday. And, and I wanted to recognize Dana Smith, Mr. Dana Smith's activities there. This is an activity that had more than 350 runners this time in grade six, seven, eighth boys, both boys and, and girls. And extraordinarily well put together. And I also want to thank all of the coaches, not only from the middle schools, but the K eights were, were involved and not all of them, but nearly all of them were involved. And it was just truly an impressive event with, with the stands virtually filled with parents coming there. And so it was, it was a great event and looking forward to more and more middle school event, athletic events. And you can truly see it in the faces of those kids. Also wanted to mention that Mr. Hernandez, Ms. Creason and I were, were the judges for the Del Campo Haunted Halls. Who was it?
I think I couldn't make it.
Was Ms. Bassinelli was the other thing. I'm sorry.
I know, we're so similar.
I don't think, but the, and as was the theme of the students earlier, yes, the seniors did win, but barely in terms of the halls and so forth. Also wanted to mention that I went on Friday to Mariposa Elementary for their, their grand opening of their, their community room. And want to thank both the, the face department as well as the Heights Church and the Citrusites Rotary for contributing to this area. And again, to see the parents there with their children, playing with their children and, and the excitement that they had for having this new facility was, was exciting to be a part of. And thank you. Also went on Saturday night to the haunted house at Casa Roble, which was the first time they had done that. And they combined a truck or treat with, with a haunted house and that sort of thing. And there literally were hundreds and hundreds of students and, and parents and they, at, at that event. So those were the ones that I attended, but all of them very well attended and so forth. And with that, we move to, do you have anything? We move to, are there any things that should be added to the agenda? Appearing that there are none, I believe. You all right? We are adjourned.